Good afternoon, everybody. Oh, this does work better, Enoch. This is quite the... I had a dented microphone this morning that wasn't that loud. All right. New year, new look to Town Hall. Thank you all for being here. We'll get everybody situated, but we have a lot to accomplish in a half hour. So we're going to get started. And something my excited, innovative executive team came up with is a raffle. So we're going to give away one prize at the beginning and one at the end. So Hoda, are you ready?
Hello? Okay, now it's working. Hi, good afternoon, everyone. For those of you that don't know me, my name is Hoda Isadian. I'm the operation executive at St. Helena Hospital. Oh, I have to come over here to be in the camera. So we're going to do a raffle ticket for you guys who were here on time. So let's see who's going to win the first prize that we have.
Okay, here you go.
Okay. Take your tickets. The number is 6974... Nah. Nine and zero. Woo-hoo! There you go. Thank you, thank you. No, we're good, thank you. Doctor, can I mention one more thing?
Yes.
And one more thing I wanted to mention to you guys. We have this bar over here that is telling you what you can do to ask any questions. You just have to text CLEARGIF330 to number 22333, and it will sign you up, it will welcome you to the session, and you can text your questions to us, and I'm going to read them at the end of the session. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Hoda. I want to just start this afternoon with a word of prayer. Let's bow our heads. Heavenly Father, we pray today for you to be with us. We pray for clarity. We have important things to share, and please help me to be clear. And be with each one here as we follow your example in providing health wholeness and hope to the patients we serve. In your name, amen. Thank you. So I'm going to go right to the first question that we had this morning. Is the hospital going to close? And that's what today is about. No, we don't have any plans to close Adventist Health St. Helena. And I wanted you to understand, not only are we planning to be here, but we actually have ambitions and a vision for the next decade. So I want to share that with you because it's very disconcerting when this program closes and that unit closes, and people are leaving the organization or transitioning into other jobs. I just want to recognize that that is very... It's big change in this organization. We've done some of those things for a long, long time, and it just feels like, well, what's going on here? So that's why I thought today was important, and we're going to spend a chunk of time really talking about our future. So Vision 2030. This coincides, and I wanted you to have something to take with you when you go home, and you can read this and talk to your family members. But the size, the side that has the... all of these boxes is really talking about our aspirations as a system. Adventist Health has developed some ambitious goals to be more providing services that consumers are looking for, really being more effective in the health management space, focusing on our care delivery. We're going to have a division that has all the hospitals, the care division, and then doing more in our communities, very intentionally. And you'll even see on here Adventist Health is very close to an agreement with the Blue Zones, which is well-known for transforming communities and making them healthier places to live. So some exciting things happening in the system, and we're making changes to align ourselves with where the system is going and also to optimize our sustainability. So that's what I wanted to share with you, to take with you. But let's just talk a little bit about who we are and where we're going. So we've been here for 142 years and have a real legacy of healing. But we do things a lot different today than we did back in those days. This is who our patients are now. They come from all over. We have people from the community and beyond, but we take care of everybody here. And so we have this vision for the future. And what's important to know is we can build a new wing to the hospital. We can tweak our services. And it's been actually more intentional than it's felt like. We've looked at the community that we're living in, and it's a lot older than it was when I moved here in 1998. Lot less people having babies, more people having need for cardiac care and neurology care. And so we're adapting our services to meet the community need more accurately and to be more relevant to this community. What we have decided, though, in looking at, as we were starting to think about what is required with seismic compliance, and by 2030, will we be able to use this building, the hospital building? And some of those things are still being decided at the state level. But we became convinced that Napa County kind of had foresight. Nine years ago, when they updated the general plan, they created a 100-acre bubble that is unique in the whole county. And it specifies that we could do health-related services. So we really want to develop the entire campus with things that complement what we do in the hospital and our clinics. So these two zones that are green, we're working on a process to, along with the county, who has to approve all this, to decide on a spectrum of services that really complement what we do in the hospital and also will bring a revenue stream to help support the hospital for the foreseeable future. And so those are things that we've got some suggestions. When you flip it over to the map side, the little green area talks about some things. I need you to know that that's all theoretical, and it may make sense to us, but we have to work through that with the county. And where that process is going, it takes a little while. I'll share that with you in a minute. But people have asked me, well, if you're not delivering babies and you don't have your behavioral... Who are you? What do you do for the community? There are still lots we do, and this is not even a comprehensive list. But it just shows that we have a diverse range of services inpatient and outpatient, and we are constantly monitoring that to make sure we're meeting our community needs and expectations. And we are still the Up Valleys Community Hospital. So this process I talked about, to work with the county to really develop the campus, that we are just completing Phase 2. Phase 1 and 2 are complete. We've been working on this for over a year. Phase 3 is the really sensitive part because some of you will remember what went on when Pacific Union College wanted to develop their land. And they had the Save Relanguin group got all upset about it. And so you need to very carefully go through this so that the community feels like you're doing something positive and not creating more traffic or more fuss. And so we're carefully going through this. We have some really good team members working on this who have extensive experience with the county. But we wanted you to know about this. We don't have it all figured out yet, but over the next few months, we will. And then Phase 4 is when we start to develop the campus and put in services that complement the hospital and can bring revenue that helps support the hospital services. So that's the quick version of where do we see we're going in 2030. And because a half hour doesn't do it justice, I wanted you to have something that you could take home and ask questions about as you think of them. But we wanted to share that today because there's been a lot of wondering. What's going on? Where are we going? Are we healthy? Are we doing well? And we do have ambitious plans for the next decade and beyond. So that's what I wanted to share with you. And I'm going to invite Elisa up. She's our finance officer, our permanent finance officer. She came and helped us on an interim basis, and she let me know if she would be willing to do it on a permanent basis. So she has some exciting things to share with you.
Good afternoon. Hello?
Hello.
Okay, you're awake. Okay, great. I am excited to see a lot of faces that I don't usually get to see. So I'm so happy that all of you came today. So I want to share some updates related to construction. You may not realize that facilities and construction types of things report usually to the finance officer. And it's kind of a unique thing. And I enjoy... I don't know anything about really construction, but I like to learn about it and see all the mechanics and hear about our processes. So I want to share with you some exciting successes that we've had. Steve Walker, some of you might know him, has been a champion to get... go line by line to all our open projects and try to finish them and get us moving forward. You know, some of them have been standing out there for a while. So I'm excited to let you know Vascular Lab is complete. We're waiting for CDPH to come and do their walkthrough. OR2, we have new lights that have been installed. And on Monday, when I was putting this together, Steve said they're done today. And then we've already got a fire inspection done, and then we're waiting for OSHPOD to come and do their walkthrough. So that's being scheduled. Women's Imaging Center. How many of you guys have gotten a chance to see that? This morning, all the ladies raised their hand. So it's open and ready. And they have some awesome 3D imaging for mammography. I've heard it's amazing. Haven't... My doctor hasn't told me yet to go see it, to go get one. But I'll be there when I'm ready. IT Shaft Sprinkler Repair. This is maybe a hidden thing that we may not really think about or know much about sometimes. But we have all kinds of hidden wires and pipes and things in the walls and in the ceilings. And this is related to our IT system. We had to repair sprinklers. They have to be fire-safe and reviewed by OSHPOD and meet certain standards for our IT system. And that is complete. The Hybrid OR Project. That one is the biggest one. People, a lot of people ask about. It's been one of the ones that's been sitting out there for several years, waiting to be completed, actually waiting to be started. And last year, I was working with Kevin Lang, our regional finance director, and we were able to get it across the finish line to get the capital approved. So we have $28 million approved for that project. It's a huge project for our organization to expand our cath lab space. And that project has started. One thing that I've learned about construction projects is you can't really start swinging hammers as soon as you cut the ribbon. So after you get funded and get the project approved, then there's some paperwork that has to be done with finalizing the plans, getting quotes from construction. We can't actually get a bid from a construction company until we've gotten the permits. So it just does take some time. But Steve has promised me that we're going to start hearing hammers here in a couple of weeks. So they will have to do some demolition, which will be a little disruptive, I think. The Cerner Med Cabinets, that's another thing that has been kind of hanging out there for a while. And these cabinets apparently are so big and heavy that we have to actually build reinforcements in the ceilings and the walls to support them. And so the construction for those cabinets will be done in two weeks. And when I started to look at this list, I felt like, okay, March is a big month because everything is like two weeks from now. So we'll have to plan some celebrations as well. Pharmacy Hood, this is one where... This is specifically related to oncology medications, where we have to mix the chemotherapy drugs. And there's certain regulations about... You guys probably don't know this, but anyway, there's certain regulations about how those medications are mixed. And we have to have a special hood for that. And that one, a good and wonderful benefit of having Steve Walker as our construction manager, director, is he was able to make a smart move and move that into a county project instead of OSHPOD, which means that it's easier to get permits and to do the work in a more advantageous way. It's still meeting all our requirements, and it's still going to meet our needs as well. But it's going to be faster to not wait for the OSHPOD permits. And then the Great Food Initiative. Some of you may have heard about this. This is a foundation-funded initiative that focuses on our kitchen. And some of our equipment in the kitchen is pretty old, like everything, rightly, right? But some of our equipment needs some repairs. And also, this initiative will provide room service meals in patient rooms, which is a huge improvement and affects patient satisfaction. So that initiative is waiting also for OSHPOD permit. And the question we get asked a lot is the West Wing. We also call the Knowledge Hub. When is that going to be available? We had to ask everyone to move out kind of urgently a couple of months ago. And this one also, we expect to be available and open for use by the end of March. So you can see a trend here, right? The end of March, it's a big deal. So we want... But we want you all to know that there's a lot of things happening. We don't always... You know, like things open and things start to be used without us sometimes really announcing it. So we wanted you to know that there's progress happening. There's work being done. There's continual movement forward. And we continue to improve where we can around the hospital. So it's exciting to see the spaces and the resources come and be usable. So thank you all for coming. And if anyone has questions about these, you know, feel free to reach out to me. And also, just give a high five or something to Steve and Matt. Matthew Rambold is his right-hand man. So if you guys see them around... Also, you might see a lot of construction workers with their vests on, kind of going in and out. You know, tell them thank you. Tell them, you know, they... I talked to one guy today, and I asked him what all the noise was, and they're working on these Cerner cabinets. And he's like, "I feel bad. The noise is really bad." And so anyway, but we want them to feel like they're making a difference here, too. So thank you.
Thanks, Elisa. Don't take my clicker. So while Liz is coming up, our patient care executive, I just want to point out that not only is a lot happening in March, but this is a big investment in this place. And it wouldn't be happening if we were going anywhere. A lot of this investment is coming from our community, who believe in us and want to support us. So this represents 35 million plus of investment. And, you know, several million of it came from our own community. So I just wanted to bring that up. Liz, what are you going to tell us about?
I'm going to talk about quality as one of the things. Do you all remember dashboards with colors on them? Safety, readmissions, mortality, and patient experience. And in the safety are all the initiatives like infection rates and falls and those types of things. And we were the best last year numerically. You know, you got red, yellow, green. But now, to be best, you have to be blue. So we're looking for all blues. And we had two blues last year. What happens when you meet your target? Somebody moves it. So now we're not blue anymore. So we have that to work for, towards. And it's always a challenge. It's great to get to the finish line and feel good about it. It's really hard to stay at the top. And so that's our challenge. I do want to say something about mortality. This morning, when I explained it, I actually would like the first three rows to stand up. Would you stand up? Count those people? When we count mortality, we save a lot of lives here at St. Helena. But when we look at the acuity and we look at what we expect to see that will die that didn't, our number is 18. And that's all that... These people represent that. So not only did... We saved a lot of you. We saved you plus hundreds others. But I just want you to know, from the expected, the whole system saved over 400. So that's pretty wonderful, huh? All right. Anybody heard anything about that? Anybody heard differing things? We are connected on a regular basis. Karen and I are on a call with corporate every day at noon to get the latest from both the CDC and California Hospital Association. There's a lot of data out there. We want to actually share facts, and so we'll keep you updated. Please make sure that you check your email because it'll be an all-St. Helena email that will give you the latest. One of the things that we're asking is that if anybody has cared for a COVID-19 patient in another hospital, that's worked in another hospital, to come forward and make sure that we know that. Because there's a quarantine period that we need to be sure that we're not exposing anybody. So keep an eye out for that. 50... No, I think, is it 72 countries now? Yeah, no, countries that have been affected. Yeah. So there was a death today in Roseville, unfortunately, somebody that was connected on a cruise ship, a very elderly person that had medical morbidity. So we learned that. But that'll hit the news, I'm sure, tonight. So just realize that we're all doing our best as a system to stay connected and make sure that we have the supplies. You didn't bring your prop. Do you have your prop?
I do.
Do you need to do... Yeah, no, you don't need to do that.
Okay.
No. And you certainly don't need to... I mean, obviously, if we start taking care of patients that have this, we would want you to wear an N95 mask, but not at this time. That's not appropriate. And lastly, the closure of Jero Psych. Rudy's done an amazing job getting that unit closed. It's always sad when we do that. What our efforts are is to try to find positions within the organization, preferably even here, for individuals that have been displaced because of closures.
Thank you, Liz. Okay. Liz left before she could remind you. We want to hear from all of you. On Monday, I believe you received an email inviting you to participate in our Pulse survey. And this is all about making sure you are able to know what your department's results, participate in making things better. So we want to hear from you. As of this morning, only 15% of us had taken it. So we just wanted to give you a quick reminder about participating in that. Okay, Sanam. We have to be quick so we can answer questions. Talk fast.
All right. So...
Oh, of course, sorry. I did the same thing Elisa did.
All right. So tell me, like, I want you to raise your hand if any of you have heard or seen our B statements. Oh, lovely. That's amazing. Okay. So the good news is, if you remember, we launched our Together We Care Award program. And the promise behind the Together We Care Award program was for my lovely friends in HIM, for EVS, for marketing, for quality departments who are touches away from the patients, we want to give everybody an equal opportunity to get the recognition because we're all here and we are all living our Adventist Health aspirations, right? So if you remember, when we launched, this was our elevator speech. So it is developed and designed to encourage everyone to be the best version of themselves, orient sense of purpose, make a difference, and be recognized through the power of storytelling. When we launched our program, we had five criteria. So if you caught someone practicing empathy, change agents, accountability. So what we're doing now is we are revamping our criteria so that they mirror our B statements. So I will... You will hear more from it, from me, about it from me. Tomorrow, I'll be sending out an email, but I wanted to share it with you in person. So it's very easy. You go to our website, and you just share your story. You pick the criteria. This is what happened. If any of you attended our Town Hall in December, the winner for the third quarter of 2019 was Anna Hernandez with her beautiful story for teamwork. So as you will receive my email, you will see how you can nominate any of your fellow associates who has demonstrated any of the B statements. And I want you to attach your powerful stories. Thank you.
Thank you, Sanam. And now the force for good. Hoda, do we have questions? We have questions in a raffle?
Yes, we do.
So you shared one with me already. When do we get a raise? Anybody care about that?
Yes.
So I've explained before, Adventist Health has a philosophy. We don't want... So there's an annual schedule that we're on, and in July is when the raises are done. What do we call that? It's not step increase, it's the...
Annual increase.
Annual increase. So that's happening in July, for sure. And nobody can stop it. It's like a freight train. It's happening. So that's happening, and I don't know what else. But we do have situations that arise where there are departments or special roles that we find out have, for whatever reason, gotten way off kilter with the market. And we do studies of that every year and try to correct that as well. But everybody gets the annual increase. Okay, what else you got?
So another question I have, and I'll turn to Elisa for that. Do we have a plan to make money at this hospital?
Get back to work? Oh, you were supposed to say that.
So this question came up this morning in a little bit of a different way, but they... Someone asked... someone asked, what is our financial performance like? So I, I want to share the good news that in January, we, was the first month in 11 months where we had EBITDA above zero. So that was something to celebrate. I don't know if you guys noticed when we gave out the little cupcakes on Valentine's Day. We wanted to celebrate and thank everyone for their hard work in January. So 2019 was a, was a tough year and we need to be honest about that and we want to be clear. We, we ended the year $13 million negative, below zero. So that's the reason we have to come and have honest reflection. What are we good at? What are we, where do we need to focus? And maybe make some hard decisions, just like you would in your own household budget, right? So, so making money is a good question and we are evaluating every service line to make sure that we are making money. We are making money, don't worry about that because we're all, you're all getting paid, you're all, you know, we're paying the lights. So we, we are staying open and that kind of thing. But we do need to, every once in a while, do this evaluation, you know, is everything we're doing, what we really need to focus on and our core mission for our community and for our area? So those are kind of the process we've been going through over the last few months. And Maria, you had a question?
Do we know why? Didn't make money in 2019 or lost money or...
Well, you know, that's a complicated question. There's lots of various aspects of that. Part of it was related to our census. Remember how Hal Chilton was here part of the year and he was sending out all those love notes to say, please flex, please flex, because our census is low? We saw that. We also had some challenges with collecting the funds that we charged. So our partner, you all know, our partnership with Cerner was changed at the end, in November because of those challenges. So we're partnering now with Huron, who has come in to take leadership over our collections and we're seeing enormous improvements. But it is going to take a while for those to be fully realized. But you can see that those hard decisions were, have to be made when we see those results. So it, it does take time to build back the, the people and the expertise that we lost when that happened, so.
Great. So one thing Hoda's doing is taking all the questions and we're developing a Q and A to send out. So just because we're running out of time to do more questions. But they're important and we want you to get the answers. So that'll be coming out very soon.
And if you have any other questions between now and the next town hall at nine, it's going to be available still. And we won't know who has sent the message, so please feel free, ask your questions and we will get all of those questions answered to you guys. So one last...
Okay, Elisa, you, you picked the...
The last raffle.
Last three numbers, 489. Who has it? 489.
Yay!
All right.
Congratulations.
All right. Thank you all for coming. Have a good rest of your day.
You're sitting, you're welcome. Thank you.